Okay, let's go. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call to order the council meeting for December 16, 2019. We'll stay for invocation and I believe councilperson Ellis will do us the honor.
Let us pray. Pray, Scott, we thank you. We thank you for the many days that you've guided us. And we thank you for just being our God all by yourself. Lord, as we have this last meeting of 2019, we ask that you bless the people that are here, bless those that wanna be here and can. And, Lord, bless our city. Bless our officers. Just bless everyone at this time of year as we prepare to celebrate this coming time of Christmas. Give us the strength to do your will, not our will but your will, Lord. Give us the strength to follow what you say in the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Have a roll call, please.
Yes, councilperson Maples. Councilperson Hawkins. Council vice president Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel. Let the record reflect five are present, four are absent.
We got poor Joe. He wanted me to relay to everybody that he had had an infected tooth extraction today and the other ones are all traveling. I need approval of a minute for our regular proceedings for December 2, 2019.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Nathan, a second by Ron. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye? All is opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we need approval of the agenda with the removal of number 12 under new business. The Reverend Jim New is gonna request to come back in January and I'm just gonna remove it since I was the sponsor and I won't be in that capacity next year, so.
Motion to amend and then a motion.
Yes, sir.
Motion to amend and then remove of number 12. Second.
Got a motion to amend removing number 12 under new business by councilperson Maples, seconded by Samuel. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Claims.
Motion approved.
Oh, that's right.
That's motion as amended.
Got a motion by councilperson Maples and seconded by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved. Civil City?
We had one claim, if we wanna go back to the parks, we had one claim on the Parks docket that should've been on the Civil City docket. It's on page four of the Parks docket. Close to the bottom, Republic Arts at $630.30. Just was on the wrong docket, so we're gonna take $630.30 off of Parks and add it to Civil City.
So.
So I have a new total for Civil City at $2,568,607.35.
And as you all will see on page four, the majority of that again is our insurance, $934,675.94. That's why it seems to, because we did a little transfer of the last installment over.
Yes.
So all claims in order?
Yes.
Motion approved with the change.
Got a motion by councilperson Samuel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilperson Ellis to approve the many claims for the total of $2,568,607.35. Is there any questions or comments? CNN, all those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We're going to Parks.
And the Parks new total, taking off the $630.30, is $55,082.49.
All claims in order?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
No.
Got a motion by councilperson, I can't believe it, Samuel seconded by councilperson Hawkins. Any further discussion or comment? And we did say all claims were in order, right?
Yep.
So, so all those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. And Heather, thank you so much for you and your staff for eight years of working with me on the claims.
No problem, thank you.
And hope is doing exceptional job and no matter what, I needed or whatever, you all been wonderful.
Well, thank you.
So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I'm forward that on to them.
Okay, we are moving on to report of the clerk.
I'm moving on.
Okay, I was gonna say, are you leaving?
Yeah, I'm leaving.
Not yet.
I am literally leaving. I have to stand here so I could address you all. Dear citizens of Jeffersonville, Miss Vice President and members of the common council, this is my last meeting serving you. As the first elected city clerk of Jeffersonville on 1/2/12, I walked into city hall with a cardboard box, notepads, pencil, pens, folders, and copy paper, and my own laptop with no office space designated for the city clerk. Building Commissioner Russ Seigrove looked at me and said, "You can use the building commissioner's conference room for your office until we figure out where to put you." My chief deputy deputy was Erica Burris, who was seven months pregnant and she was not retained in her position in the finance department, and I sat up on a conference table. In May, the clerk's office was moved to where planning and department is, and eventually we moved back to the city hall where the Jeff PD administration offices were when they moved out. During my tenure, I have worked diligently to assure transparency in the clerk's office through public documents, audio, and video council meetings, and posting on Youtubes and Facebooks for persons who cannot attend the council meetings. I have performed over 75 marriages. Twenty-five have been same-gender marriages, and I even have interpreters at some of the marriages I've performed. I've always been accessible to the citizens and have taken time to work with them on their issues and direct to the correct city, county, or state office. I have also been on the elected executive committee of the Indiana League of Municipal Clerk Treasurers, legislative committee of both ILMCT and Accelerate Municipalities in Indiana, and resolution clerk for the ILMCT. It was instrumental in passage of the legislation to assure clerks and city controllers required the clerk and fiscal officers of all cities and towns to complete at least 14 hours training courses within one year and 36 for three. And it requires all clerks and fiscal officers to fulfill the training requirements for each term they're in office. I have held elected positions of eight years on the city common councils as council at large. I was four years as Jeffersonville Township Assessor Level Two and two years County Council at Large, never once forgetting who I've served. In 1978, I started working with Life Springs Mental Health Services, responsible for all mental health commitments. I have sat in court as advocates for these persons being committed. I also have 1,500 caseloads of persons in state mental institutions and traveled to the state to meet with them and assist those who were leaving the institution to reenter into the community. I also collected over 2,000 Christmas gifts each year so persons from our communities who are in state institutions had Christmas presents. A lot of them never had any family to do that. During this time, I became very involved in the legislative process as Vice President of Advocacy for Mental Health Association and worked with LSA on drafting bills for persons with physical and mental disabilities. I burned I-65 up during the legislative sessions. I have testified in both in the state houses of Indiana and on Capitol Hill. I worked with Senator Domenici and Senator Tom Harkins on the ADA federal legislation, and to this day, I still have the signed legislation given to me by them. Barb helped on that, too. I worked with Senator Wellstone, Senator Domenici, and Senator Kennedy on the mental health parity federal law, which prevents group health plans and health insurance insurers that provide mental health and substance use disorder benefits from imposing less favorable benefits limits on those with people like medical and surgery, so to make sure everybody had the right. In 1990-91, I started the first family support group for Operation Desert Storm. This is the first time women went into combat, and I worked with two young women who were deployed along with my nephews. I saw firsthand at how World War II affected my uncles and aunts who served in the WACS. I saw how the Vietnam War affected my brother, brother-in-law, sister, uncles, cousins, and the PTS that afflicted them from both of the wars. I had a nephew and great nephews going to war and knew that my family was not the only one. Our first meeting, I expected 10 people, over 100 showed, and was able to help start the support groups in this area. I was interviewed on national radio and television and received a state award, but I did this for the families, not for norativity. I continue to work the fight on the PTSD legislation. The reason I'm giving you that background, this is how I got started with being in politics. Under Mayor Raymond Parker, he appointed me to the Jeffersonville Ethics Commission, and I held the position of president until Steve Stimmler met with me and convinced me to run for city council at large, as he had decided not to run again. Therefore, my story, running to serve, started. I also served as president and project manager for the jail-holding corporation for the new jail. My father, Bill Conlon, served as building commissioner, planning and zoning for the city of Jeffersonville for 20 years. He died February 22, 1983, at his seat during a plan commission and BCA meeting. I saw him give his life to this community, and he always told me, "Do not forget those who someday you will serve." In all my elected offices held, I've always remembered those words and always wanted him to be proud of me carrying on his legacy. My father taught me how to have a photographic memory. At age four, I started playing classical music. I started U of L School of Music at 16, and I also studied music at the Royal Academy. My parents were told when I was in elementary that I should be institutionalized, and I would never get out of high school. Those words were very hard for me to understand, and I strive hard each day to hide my disabilities. I suffer from depression, and I'm on the Asperger's spectrum. I have, the past, I have been called names witch, bitch, crazy, and would rather fight a grizzly bear, because I strive to make sure that what I am responsible for by state statute is done correctly, and I want all the i's dotted and t's crossed. I remember my father's work and his ethics. I have many people to thank during this journey of public service. My husband, Dave Roy, has stowed by me through thick and thin. Steve Stimmler started me on this journey, and I could not have made it all these years without him. Candy Stewart, Joe Rink, who was the only one that helped me during my campaigns, it was Jill and I. My family, without them, I could not be the person I am today. My staff has also been great this past years, especially Erica Burris and Patsy Kaisers, who are my chief deputies. Lisa Gill, you have been there since I first met you at city council. Ron, Nathan, Ed, thank you for your support, your sounding board, and your leadership. Thank you, common council, for allowing me to serve with you. I hope you've learned a little bit through me. However, most of all, I want to thank the citizens of Jeffersonville, who put their faith and trust in me to assure they were represented with integrity, honesty, and transparency. My last parting words to all of you and the new council for 2020. Being elected is not a par trip. It is not going around stating you are an elected official. It is about being humble, serving those who elected you, for without them, you could not be sitting in your positions and your next ventures. Remember, as my father always said to me, "No matter who you are going up the ladder, it's easy, but coming down, people will step all over you if you let them down." One last parting thing, we all put our pants on one leg at a time. We are no different than those that we serve, because one day, we will not be sitting in these seats, and we still want to be respected. I thank you. I thank you, the citizens of Jeffersonville, for the honor.
I'm gonna go ahead and present you on behalf of the city council, the city clerk, Vicki Conlon, for your eight years of dedication as city clerk. I was there when you brought in your box upstairs, and you were the first city clerk, and then you came away for me, which will be the second city clerk, but I, if I'm half the city clerk, you are. Everybody will be in good hands, but thank you for your service. And. That's a tough act to follow. Okay, thank you, Vicki. Let's move on to the unfinished business. Lynn Ashack, you're here for 2019 OR 7-1. It's about the bond that was passed on the first and second. We didn't have those in our pocket, but it was all presented last time.
Twice.
Twice.
So, if you wanna, you all wanna look at it, I got it.
No changes.
No changes. So unless there's any questions or anything, I'll entertain the motion to pass and throw it in final.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve by councilperson Hawkins and seconded by councilperson Samuel. I just wanna once again reiterate, Lynn and the sewer board, thank you for all your hard work and for working with me. I know at times, Lynn, you'd be really, really ready to pull your hair out. I've been there as much as I can every step of the way, but this really means a lot that we're getting this all wrapped up, like, because that was one of the reasons why I ran, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you all again. So if there's no other comments or questions, I'll go ahead and, all those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Whew, that's a big relief, having that signed. Okay. Mr. Merkley, 2019 OR 72, an ordinance establishing the salaries for elected officials in the city of Jeffersonville passed on first and second. Is there any changes or?
No. Again, we're doing this to comply with the change in the new state law. We've added some provisions to comply with that.
So if there's no questions, nothing's changed, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding this right, the next council won't have a say in this, because they can't vote themselves raises in essence, correct?
Correct.
And that applies, does that apply for the mayor's salary and the clerk's salary as well? This is our last chance if we wanna adjust any of this. Okay, and then another thing I have is Section 3 says elected officials may elect to receive this stipend. I don't feel as if we deserve it, that the city council should be getting a stipend for that. I don't know if we receive it. I don't think I do.
That was, that was in the, that's in the existing ordinance.
So I think we should probably change the, make a change and say the mayor and clerk, because that would be, the mayor and clerk would be the only other two, and I would assume the mayor needs a cell phone. I can't speak to what the clerk does, probably, they use it all the time. So I would like to change, get us off of that.
We use our, I use our.
You could just, you could just simply make it, I mean, you could just say full-time
elected officials.
Full-time. They use.
And may, doesn't mean they have to.
I would like to see the change to everyone.
So then, yeah, then I'll have.
And then to finish my, so to finish my thought, I don't think we, when I say we, I mean councilpersons, are deserving of, I think our patient stay the same. The clerk, I could be convinced, and now we're in this weird situation where there's only five of us, which I don't really like dealing with people's salaries that affect their lives with only five of us present, but, I mean, life happens to everyone. And then, you know, which applies more to the clerk and the mayor's salaries, not to ours, because I would not vote for a raise in our salary unless it was a deal breaker for something else. So I really haven't talked to anybody about this. What do you, what's everybody, what are your thoughts?
I think last meeting, nobody spoke on changing anything, and I didn't receive any requests from the administration, so I assumed we were just keeping everything the same.
I would be supportive of a consideration for the mayor, as me personally. I would not, at this point, for the clerk, simply because the clerk is going into it knowing what the salary was, it's new, of course, in the future. I'm curious how increases are made in the future.
How do you answer? Every time, so here's the deal, you can never lower elected.
Right.
So the council for 2021 will vote on salaries of 2021.
And we, you include this with the regular salary ordinance?
No. No, every year, the council may adopt a salary ordinance for the elected officials for the subsequent year.
Okay.
Now, if you don't do that, the salary, the salary continues as it is.
I thought I heard that this was the only chance from here on.
No.
For next year.
Oh, I thought for the next term. Well, Congress can't. I thought that was.
It's just you cannot lower.
I thought that was something I didn't know.
So when the council comes in and then.
You mean, we're not as important as Congress? Is that what you're trying to?
You're more important to me than Congress, however.
Let me ask you a question. If this is, whatever we approve tonight is approved, in January of next year, can the council amend this?
They could only, no, not for, not for next year. They would have to adopt one that would be effective for 2021.
It can never go back.
No.
So you can't, on the clerk's salaries, and Vicki remembers this, one of the reasons why the clerk's salaries have remained pretty competitive is because every year, they gave the clerk, who's there for 24 years, a raise.
They didn't me, they lowered mine.
Because you were new then, that's right.
Yeah, and I had to work up.
But so once it's, and that kind of is traditionally what happened.
And I think what we've got into is what's happened, and what happened, Scott, is, is that instead of the elected official or elected official getting a raise every year, this tends to happen like every four years or even longer, so the elected officials are sort of behind as opposed to the other employees who would get a 3% to 5% raise every year, so.
The way the state statute is, is every year, you pass a salary ordinance, it has to be passed for elected official by December 31st, which means you can do it during budget time, too. When you do your budget hearings, you can do the elected official's salary. It has always been the custom since I've been clerk, not because I'm clerk, since 2012, and I even think prior to that, that it was always done in December.
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't we do a raise two years ago?
No.
Or last year?
No.
You did on the clerk and the mayor?
No, I have not had it, no. 2016, 2015 for 16.
You did for a new term.
I would remember.
I think. I was remembering, I think the mayor has received an increase since I've been here, because I wasn't here in 2016, and I come on in 2017. And I'm like Scott over there, we have four other council members that are not here, and I would also like to see what their opinion is about this. I would support it as it currently is, but I don't see changing anything unless we have the rest of the board members at this point.
And I would point out, in terms of your own statement, it is proclivity that nothing's gonna pass if it doesn't vote yes. You have to have all five, because you just have a minimum requirement. And if it doesn't pass in any form, the only way you can do something relative to this for going back to the previous year is have special meaning before December 31st.
Which if you're wanting the other council members' input, I guess that's the only solution you really have.
Reality, they've had opportunity to provide input, for sure, they have.
I'm not.
You wanna make the motion?
I think he has amended.
Well, I've, all I've done is share, I really haven't, just shared my thoughts on the two things we've discussed. It sounds like we're all okay with councilpersons and president, we're all okay with clerk. Is everybody in agreement with changing the cellphone language?
I am.
Would you all get change to cellphone language?
So you want full-time elected officials?
Right. So it makes us out of it. I mean, that's, that $50, you know, that's.
That's a lot, I mean, if you watch it, there's not very many people submitting claims on them. You have to submit a claim to get that reimbursed. I don't think many council people are using it.
That's never been in the eight years I've been on, so.
Yeah.
So then I need a motion to amend.
Can I add something? If we're gonna amend one part of it, I would like, I know Councilman Owen has supported it too on Section 7, it says elected officials may elect to receive a stipend for services eligible on boards and commission. Would anybody be opposed? We put, part-time elected officials are not allowed to receive stipends for boards.
He found that.
Because from my understanding, you know, when I went to plan commission, they're here to get your paycheck, and nobody that was on the council that was a representative took the paycheck. You know, I don't think anybody gets on the boards to get paid, but if we, I would like to remove that. If you wanna sit on board, I don't, as a councilperson, you're being paid as, but that's for part-time, because I believe the mayor, the sewer, I would like to keep that on, but say, amend to say, this section does not apply to part-time elected officials.
Or we could just say, full-time elected officials may elect to receive.
Look, can I ask you a question on that? Because the sewer department, that's a total entity, different entity, correct? So I mean, that wouldn't even actually.
Well, the problem is now the statute, the way they've written it, they want, they want everything.
They want it in there, but like, if I sit on a board, I can't be paid.
But you can.
No, I can't.
You can?
No, uh-uh, no. That's the state statute.
Okay, the clerk.
And, but the mayor can.
I don't wanna parse words, but I don't consider myself a part-time councilperson. I put in full-time hours, and so could somebody, I mean, I guess if you hire Larry, you could argue you could get a $50 stipend or, you know, for the phone, whatever. But is there, should you say councilman?
This section does not apply to the city council.
Okay.
I would rather see it stay as it is, and like I say, we have four other people that's not here that would probably feel different. And as it stands, I will support the cellphone, but I will not support changing any of the rest of them.
Wait a minute, you will support the cellphone?
Yeah, I'll support the change on removing the cellphone.
And will you, and you'll, okay.
So instead of saying on the cellphones, the full-time piece, can we reword that and say not the city council?
No, you need to put full-time elected.
Full-time, if full-time statutes define this, per unit and hours.
But actually, we only have to work one day, so.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Well, if it comes up next year, I'll be happy to discuss it in open meeting about members sitting on the board and clicking other payments for boards or shutting herself off, take care of that for your next four years, how about that?
Thank you.
I, yeah, I think that's.
We've only five of us then.
We have to be in agreement.
We gotta agree, so I'll say, I'd like to motion to approve this ordinance with the changes discussed, changing the verbiage for Section 3 and cellphones. I think we can.
To full, to state full-time elected officials.
Correct.
I want your motion to amend.
To amend.
Motion to amend.
Do I have a, do I have a second? I got a motion and a second to amend adding to Section 3, the verbiage, full-time before elected officials. Is there any other discussion or comments? All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, I need a motion to.
Motion approved, amended, 2019 OR 72.
On the 31st.
On 31st.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further comment or questions? All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Heather, has anything changed on 2019 OR 73, the ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department? certain funds within the same department? So I will retain a motion for third and final.
So move.
Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to new business, number twelve was removed, so we have Brad Benson, this will be a public hearing, a petition for parcellation of an unapproved platted alley connected to Southern Indiana Avenue Public Way.
All right, Brad Benson with Applegate Fire from Holium here in Jeffersonville at four twenty-eight Meggs Avenue, here on behalf of Rockies Realty. Um, Rockies, that development's been here for rezoning, excuse me, was improved here by, for rezoning back on September third, um, and then that's, the development plans have been approved, and as far as we've had variances, basically, it's been well-known that this, what's going on with this project, this is where the Rockies currently is, there'll be apartment buildings there. What I'm doing, and I've given you the same exact, both of those are same exact thing, the only thing, reason why I gave you the second copy was, it's a little bit hard to see it with my marks, want to make sure you all are aware. There's a twelve-foot alley, um, that is on the north side of the flood wall. We went back all the way through to the original plat or map of Jeffersonville, and that's where it was, we tried to find what was, what created it. It dates all the way back that far. That alley's never been improved, it's never been used, there's nothing there. Um, what we're doing now is just kind of cleaning up for development purposes of where you can't build a building over top of where there isn't technically an alley. So that's, that's the purpose, um.
I got a question real quick. So that vacate will not in, interfere or hinder public safety, the police or fire ambulance or anything going, getting to or from somewhere?
No, ma'am, it will not at all. That, like I said, it's not improved by any means, uh, if you wouldn't have looked at, you know, seen it on the plat, you wouldn't notice there. Um, there's no, no structure, there's no roadway, there's no anything. Um, but as you mentioned, the one, the four elements are not hindering growth, not hindering any access, um, or lands, uh, or affecting the public way, and it's not in this case at all, in fact, it's helping the development, uh, by means of the apartment complex that have been well discussed throughout this council as well as other boards, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
What was I talking? That is correct.
Anybody have any further questions for open up the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna officially open up a public hearing for this petition for the parcellation of the unapproved platted alley connected to Southern Indiana Avenue Public Way. Anybody here to speak for or against, do step four, and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm officially closing public record, and I will entertain a motion if there's no further discussion. Got a motion by councilperson Samuel, second by councilperson Hawkins, any further discussion or question? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Okay. Do we have any attorney comments?
No, he's on the phone.
Any attorney comments?
No, just actually.
Merry Christmas, happy new.
On his way out. No, I have nothing to say other than thanks for last year, and I guess I want to call and tell me where I need to come in February.
He's still smiling and laughing. All right, I don't see any department heads here, other than, well, I'm on department heads.
Yes, there's two.
I got you.
Barbara Henderson.
Barb, you have the floor.
Basically, it's an informational issue for us. January ninth of twenty twenty, Haven House, along with some of our community partners, will be hosting a forum on homelessness and a discussion on the scope and how far-reaching the issue of that and affordable housing are in Southern Indiana. The forum will be held at three hundred Spring from one to four P M. It's a multi-county discussion, as it's a multi-county problem. Representatives from the Indiana Housing Finance Authority will be there, as well as the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The discussion will vary in content, and then the format's laid out for you. We'll talk about numbers, where people are located, how long people with limited income can expect to be homeless. The representatives mentioned above will kick off the discussion, after overview's will break out into smaller groups for a more detailed discussion, then the entire group will convene and give the breakout results. We'll have follow-up meetings in February and March. Um, there are dollars available to a problem that's getting more and more pervasive in our community. Um, I'm stepping away from the shelter this year because issues like this need to be addressed, and, and it's time to address them in a real way. And I can't do that and do this, that's just all there is to it. I need to be free to, to speak and to be able to do what I need to do to help this city move forward in housing, people who have the ability to, don't have the ability to be housed. We have, um, closed waiting list in our public housing authorities, they open for brief periods of time. You'll have a hundred and twelve people in the shelter and ten units available. The largest homeless shelter outside of Haven House in the region are our local jails, and there's nowhere for people to go from jail, is there Scotty? It's us, or the streets, or the shelter, and the jail is just overcrowded. I did speak with J B Noel, he intends to be there, I asked for both of you, so I'm sure you'll be there too. Because we've really got to come to some solutions. The walking bridge brings a whole lot more than traffic to spend money in our community. It's very easy for people to come over from the streets when sweeps happen, and if you sit there late at night, you see them coming. I do that often. And you see bass carts with people who are talking to themselves constantly, and who will defecate in the streets. Three of the businesses downtown told me that they went out back to change their garbage cans one day, or to pick them up where they'd gone over in a storm, they thought, when they got there, there were people sleeping in them, they had emptied them out in the alley, and they crawled into the garbage cans because they had nowhere else to go. So it's a serious issue, and it's one that needs, needs to be addressed in a real way. It's time to quit throwing lip service at it, and oh, what a shame, and oh, Anderson in that damn shelter, excuse my language, but that's exactly what gets said. Well, now it's time for us to put our money where our mouth is. We need affordable housing in this community, and not just for people with income that can spend money downtown. We have a whole slew of people who do not have the income to afford those apartments. Um, they can't pay nine hundred and a thousand dollars a month, they can't pay five hundred dollars a month. So how do we build capacity for all of our community and not just for part of it? And that's what this discussion is gonna kick off. So we're asking for all of you to be there, and we think it's an important discussion, and as I said, it will be a series of three, January, February, and March, this is the kickoff date for January. We've talked about this for years, haven't we Nathan?
Yes.
Okay, and that's all I needed from you. Please be there. Thank you.
I think the other one just signed up for that vacate.
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on to council comments, councilperson.
First, um, I'll try to keep it short. Uh, Vicky, thank you for your service to the city, uh, hearing about some of the details that in the past I didn't hear about was very interesting. Um, Nathan, thank you for your service. Lisa, thank you for your service, as you're gonna still work for the city in some capacity in a more full-time, as Nathan, for quotes around, role. Um, also thank Barb for all your service to the community.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, um, I hear, you know, I'm working in, uh, in the place I do from the jail, and you are absolutely correct, you know, and we, we work hand in hand together, so thank you for everything you've done in the past and, and still trying to keep it going in the future, uh, and still be relevant, so. Thank you to all, Elroy I just mentioned, Larry, I guess, thank you, uh, for being our attorney, but we pay you, so.
That's right.
Um, that's it, and Merry Christmas.
Councilperson Hawkins, thank you for toughening it out, being here.
Yeah, I'm, I am feeling a little better, maybe it was all of you, the spirit of togetherness. Uh, I go a lot of what Scott says, thank, uh, Vicky, thank you very much, every time I've ever, and there was a lot of questions, you were always like on the spot, one hundred percent, uh, thank you so much, and then to Lisa, Nathan, and Ed, who isn't here, I'd like throw him in, uh, you guys also, like, you always know where you guys were coming from, it was always easy to talk to you, like, there wasn't any game to play, it's like, this is what I think, this is what I think, that is very nice to be on the council with. Um, Merry Christmas to everybody, and as a reminder, this Friday night, uh, Jeffersonville Basketball, who was ranked number one up until mere days ago, losing on a last-second shot to the fourth-ranked teams, they play number one ranked Silver Creek at Jeffersonville High School, and it'll probably be a sellout, and it'll be a great American Indiana moment. So if everybody wants to show up, please do, they can vote for, it'll be a great game, that's it.
Councilperson Ellis.
Yes, uh, one of the reasons that I voted, or I said I would vote against the change in our salary ordinance is, I've sat on a no, number of the boards that we've talked about, and when I was sitting on those boards, I had the opportunity to take that stipend, and I refused that stipend, but I don't think that we should change anything that affects the other council members without their presence, and that was the reason that I, uh, took the position that I took. Barbara, I'm glad to see you doing this, because over the years, we have been back and forth on the homeless situation, the Haven House and other situations, and then when I approached you the other night, that, uh, asked about the same thing that you had already started working on, I really appreciate that, and I plan on being at these meetings and seeing what we can do about the, the homeless situation that we have not only in Jeffersonville, but Jeffersonville, Clarksville, New Albany, and the surrounding areas, I don't know if there's much we can do about what's going on in Lowell, but I do know that we need to look at doing something here, and we hopefully can get Jeff Housing Authority also there, because I'm around the housing authorities quite a bit, and I know there's a lot of vacant apartments and things, and we need to encourage them, uh, hey, get the people that you're gonna put in there and let them help fix it up, if that's what needs to be done, but we need to really discuss that.
Can I just address that second? I just want to let you know that Darnell Jackson calls repeatedly when he has some things to be done, and he utilizes the people at the shelter and pays them to go in and clean out apartments before they begin the work, the, the structural work. So he is already doing that, that's just kudos to him.
And, uh, Lisa?
Ron?
Nathan? Ed, uh, Vicky, and especially, Vicky, you know, you and I were elected to the city council at the same time, uh, back then, back then. Uh, my first term on the city council was with you when we were elected there, and I appreciate, uh, I appreciate the friendship that we, I have with the, the three of you here, and, and, uh, also with, uh, Ed, uh, gosh, it's, uh, we've developed a wonderful friendship, and we've developed the ability to work together. I'm not the easiest person to work with, and I realize that, but, uh, you know, uh, we all have a mind of our own, and, uh, for me, it's, it's about doing what's right, and I try to the best of my ability to do what's right, and to think about what decisions that I make, and how they'll affect someone else. Uh, Scott and Scotty, I appreciate you all, and I appreciate working with you, a lot of times, uh, we conflict in the way we think, but I, I appreciate you being open-minded enough to do what you think is best, and if, if, if you don't, then you have to wonder, well, why am I here? You know, I'm here to make a decision to help the people of Jeffersonville, and it's been, it's been a challenge. Serving on the city council is a challenge, but, uh, God has blessed me with being here, because I know the only reason that I'm in this position is that God has put His hand on me, and He's guided me in the places that I continue to get to go. I will continue to call upon you, Nathan, Lisa, Vicky, I'll continue to call upon you when I need some advice, because a lot of times I need someone to guide me and to tell me, you know, at least I want to hear from someone else about which way I should go, or what, at least what you think is best. So thank you for, thank you for serving along with me, and God bless you all, I'll continue to keep all of you in my prayers.
Councilperson Samuel.
Just a couple things. Um, first, I, as always, I appreciate Assistant Chief Moreland being here.
He's not Assistant Chief?
As you, in the past.
Oh.
I'm, I'm giving you credit for the past. When I'm, when I'm not a councilman anymore, I hope somebody calls me councilman, I don't make me feel good, so I'm trying to give you a little perk, Kevin. I appreciate you, working the field over the years, and, uh, I think it's Corporal Lydon, is that right? I'm sorry, I'm moving on, Kevin. Drew Lydon, I appreciate him being here and their service to our community. Corporal Lydon, he took me to the, uh, to be with the SWAT team, I got to shoot with him a little while back, and I just appreciate, I appreciate that and the time I got to spend with, with him, and we have some great, great folks on, on that. Uh, want to say appreciation and, uh, congratulations to Scotty, fifteen years on the Clark County Sheriff's, with the Clark County Sheriff's Office, that's commendable, and I appreciate that. We've kind of had a little bit of a love fest tonight, and, um, I, we're gonna have it a little bit longer, and I, I, I gave you a warning last, last meeting, so, um, I did, I, I am giving this to, I gave this to the clerk already, so you don't have to type any of this down if you don't want to, but, uh, I just want to have a few closing comments. Uh, many people have asked me how I'm feeling as the term of the city council, uh, is ending, and I usually say it's bittersweet, uh, but as I think about it, I compare it to graduation from high school. I've spent the same amount of time it takes somebody to graduate, twelve years. Uh, you know, you're sad at graduation because relationships and connections will change, but I'm excited, uh, because I know the next part of my journey is gonna be different, and I'm excited to look ahead. Uh, on June eleventh, two thousand and seven, Steve Stenler's name has been mentioned already, but Steve encouraged me to get involved, and I did so at a Democrat caucus, I was sworn in to replace Phil McCauley as one of the two at-large council people. Little did I realize the journey I was about to take. Being able to be involved with a team of others to help shape and lead your hometown is a wonderful opportunity and a blessing. While every turn on the journey wasn't met with peace and happiness, the greatest majority was, was truly full of satisfaction. I ought to be remiss if I didn't mention some of those whom I served with and worked alongside, uh, those being three mayors, Rob Wayes, Tom Galligan, and Mike Moore, our first city clerk, uh, Vicky, thank you for your service, uh, twenty-two council members, Ron Grooms, Barbara Wilson, Keith Fetz, John Perkins, Wayne Carter, Brian Glover, Zach Payne, Dennis Julius, Connie Sellers, Mike Smith, Tony Wadsworth, Josh Rodriguez, Callie Yon, Steve Webb, and our current members, Dustin White, Joe Paris, Ed Zastovny, Scotty Maples, Lisa Gill, Scott Hawkins, Matt Owen, and Ron Ellis. Our department heads and our city employees, they're the ones that actually get the things done. Uh, we have a great group of folks, and I'm so grateful to be, have gotten to work and to know them. Our attorney, Larry, worked with you for many years, appreciate you. But lastly, and probably most importantly, my wife, appreciate her. Uh, and then the many friends that I have here, my goodness, um, Richard and Nancy, you've been involved from day one, Bobby Campbell, uh, Steve Gill, Barbara Anderson, and, and others, appreciate working with you, and I've been really blessed to work with a good group of people. When I decided to run for election, the overriding intent was to make my hometown of Jeffersonville better. I quickly learned that everyone has an opinion and knows what's best for our community, but few actually put themselves out there and run for election to serve in a public way. It's easy, uh, to see and be, and, and be fixed on the. It's easy to see and be, and be fixed on the positive once you win your election, but initially you never realize the downside. There will be times when you have to vote against a longtime friend, a neighbor, a business associate, or even possibly a family member. It's not easy, but you do for the greater good and try to do what's right for the community and city you love. Most people don't know the struggles, the difficult phone calls, the questions 24 hours a day, seven days a week, always seeming to be on call, the confrontations that may happen, and the time that is put in. I want to personally thank each of you, my fellow councilmembers, and those whom I've named earlier for your service that you've, you've done. You've helped make a difference and especially done so during difficult times. The good times far outweigh the difficult. For example, some good times when you're able to assist someone who comes to you to help cut through government bureaucracy, publicly acknowledging young people or adults for doing something positive, when you enact legislation that makes Jeffersonville better, when you represent the entire community at various events, when you're able to be part of building new facilities, helping those who can't help themselves, and so much more. I left off one friend and that's PK Puffinstein. I appreciate you being here, PK. It's truly been a blessing and an honor to me to be a city councilman in Jeffersonville for 12-plus years. The growth and change that's taken place over those years is remarkable. In 2007, the total budget was 20.4 million. We just passed a budget of 54.1 million. That's 165% growth. As I've reflected back, there are a handful of votes that I wish I'd voted differently on. However, there are countless votes that I'm so glad I was able to support and be part of. In reflection, I wanted to list some of the highlights and changes that I've been able to be a part of over the years alongside the mayors and the councilpeople and employees that all made it happen. Of course, annexation, that's where we brought in most of the 6th District. We went from a Class III to a Class II city designation. The police and fire, I was able to be their liaison for over four years. And during that time, we added 34 new police, 29 new firefighters, totaling 63 new safety officers. We established a police and fire mayor commission. We built a new fire headquarters. We built a new fire station in the 6th District. We built new police headquarters, a new city hall. Helping hold the line on costs resulted in strong, a very strong financial position for Jeff and even to the point where the state acknowledged Jeff over most other cities in the state. We were part of building sidewalks across all parts of the city, connecting schools and other walking ways. The River Stage was non-existent. I'm happy about the fitness testing and the work performance evaluation. We got in the fire contract. I think that makes everybody safer. Our park system was totally overhauled, providing state-of-the-art facilities. The Whirlig Soccer Complex, Vising Park, Bob Hedges Park, Chapel, the new Chapel Lake Park, just to name a few. 10th Street widening and the gateway improvements, downtown wireless project, Big Four Bridge funding and building out, funding and growth of the Clark County Airport. I'm almost done. Public arts and the Public Art Commission, and we established a sustainable funding stream for that. And most recently, we helped establish, establish a homeless needs and services fund and we have a funding stream set up for that. Many of the changes have taken place over the past 12 years, have been significant. There are many others. But there's going to be many more to take place in the next four years, frankly. My hope and prayer for the incoming mayor and for this city council is that you would have wisdom and vision. And when your term of service is over, you'll be able to say that you did what was right for Jeffersonville's future. I can tell you, it will go fast. And I encourage you to savor the journey. Thank you.
And then there was me. I didn't write anything down because my parents just taught me that leave things better than when you found them. And when I ran a city council, I stepped way out of my comfort zone because still don't anybody call me a politician. Call me a public servant. But I ran for three things when I ran for city council that were important to me, that I seen issues with and I just had to do something about it. And if it wasn't for my husband, that encourages me every day and supports me. And he sits right there, especially when he knows there's tough meetings or anything that I can just look at him and remember why I'm here. But I ran on, for public safety, drainage and sewer rates. And when it came down to public safety, I've never been shy about how I've helped set up block watch across the city. This is almost before I was on city council and things I've done with the neighborhoods, even thinking about city council. But I had some issues in my neighborhood, being that we were close to Jeff High and we had Emmett Park that was right there in our neighborhood. And nobody wants to hear us, but I'm going to flat-out tell you, we had gangs. And I was bound and determined that I was going to do something about it because my child was small at the time and it was my job as a mother, as her parent, and being in my neighborhood to provide a safe neighborhood for my child. She deserved that. And the kids in my neighborhood deserved a safe place to play in that playground. But I had to support the state police, the county police, and especially JPD. They came out there and I was sitting and it was Jeff Gordon, and I'll never forget this. He sat beside me, stayed with me that whole evening, especially when there's like Jeff High gangs, because you'd be surprised how the kids were preyed upon. He had a revolver or weapon that, I don't know what it was even he had at the time, and it looked like it was going to fall, fall apart in his hand. And I said, "When was that issue?" He goes, "I don't know. We just get what we're issued to." And then I found out there were some expired police vests. And I looked over and I said, "Your car's smoking. What's going on?" He had to pop the hood of his car and leave, because it would overheat. And I'm like, "Oh, no. This, this, this is unacceptable to me." So I ran and since then, even before I became on city council, I sought out grants and even before I even threw my hat into the ring, we didn't have a grant writer here at the city, so I just pulled up my sleeves and went and got a grant before that they, the computers in their vehicles. I did that before I even said I was going to run because we had police that pulled up to houses that I knew had weapons in it. I knew that there was history. I knew that they were somewhat more incarcerated. I knew, I thought, "These guys cannot go in there blind. They have got to know what they're rolling up on. They got to know what their situation they're going on." So that led to taking that to legislators, Senator Luger and Connie was helping me on the federal end. On the state side, it was Senator Connie Sykes, something, I think I remember her was a huge advocate. So we were able to secure that grant for the computers in their car and I believe that they, rifles or shotgun or what, I can't remember now all of it was. And that, and then when I became a councilperson, I worked with all the chiefs, with Tim Derringer. He couldn't get support for a grant. At that time, there was 100% grants. So I took up the charge and we now have the Bearcat, which is known all throughout the region. The SWAT team has the Bearcat. And we got on that grant too, also the police boat and a trailer. So I really left my mark when it came to public safety. I remember I was getting a little pushback, but I led the way, be surprised that the simulator that the police train on. I led, so it's just like, when they, the car was the last thing I had to, had to do and I'm really proud that now we, they've got good cars now. They've got, they don't, they don't overheat when they're out of scenes and the vests. We all make sure that they have the, I did not want to see an officer, especially this day and age, out there and you can relate to that, to know that expired vests. I didn't even know what that meant. I just thought, "These guys are out there risking their life. I'm going to make sure they have what they need." And then also on the fire end, with the, being married to a firefighter for, what, 30 years now? I knew that their equipment and bringing on new personnel on both ends, so I made my mark there too. And actually, the number one person that was there with me through all of that, I'd get the call of the need and my first call would be to Nathan. And Nathan, we'd get a bad rap sometimes because we would say what we, what we felt and we would say what they needed to hear, not what some people wanted to hear. And but through it all, we were for them and we were for the, their safety, for the betterment of them and the betterment of our city. And we have administrations and people in place that support that. And I don't think there's a councilmember up here that would disagree that public safety's number one. And then the other one was drainage. When you live in a neighborhood where as soon as it starts raining, you got to rush home or you can't go to vacations or whatever and flooding and going out in the streets and seeing that flooding, so I really took up the charge then on drainage. And I remember getting a phone call from my brother Jamie and he says, "Taking on developers is not a smart thing to do, sis." And I said, "Well, I've already took on gang members." And that was, but he's just kind of teasing me, but you know what? I was going to make sure that they did their projects right and make sure that all the development that was going in and around was done right. And then that led to Nathan appointing me to the drainage board. So you, in a way, you're kind of responsible because you're like, let me see what's sitting on the boards and how the government ran and all that, gave me the courage and felt that I was ready to run for city council. And also with, I'm going off council with my head held high because all my drainage projects, now that especially Ethan Hopkins is finally under contract, it's going to get done. I had some, in my district, that were out of their homes for over six months because of flooding. And the ones that didn't have insurance, so I had to get in flood relief and all that. When you see, in the middle of the night, they called me and I was, I showed up in my pajamas and didn't realize it was in my pajamas. But when you see what they're wading through, that everything they own was flooded, it's like, okay, we got to do better. So that Ethan Hopkins is now under contract, Woodland Court is now under contract. And one of the biggest things, then with the sewer rates, Sandy Knott called me and said, "Lisa, can you come to one of our meetings? We're flooding. We've got people that, the houses are flooding. That's in Cherry Hill. We've got intersections are flooding. They're impassable." And she goes, "I know you work on drainage." So when I went down, I met there and I brought Andy Crouch with me, the city engineer. Lynn actually came with me too and several people from the city. And that was my first term. And I was bound and determined that we were going to do something to address this and address the flooding downtown. And I was going to do something about sewer rates because when I was door to door, I actually had three families that by the end of the month were eating cat food. And one of the reasons was, you pay your sewer bill, you pay your bills, whatever. So I was determined to make sure that we didn't have another rating, rate increase. And with that 8th Street stormwater and sewer separation, it was literally me rolling up my sleeves and bringing people to the table. We went off of a stormwater master plan from Christopher Burke. We saw all the hot spots that were in my district leaning on down and took a lot of trial and error and failed, but Andy Crouch and Lynn Ashack and Jacoby Toons and Land sat in there with us and we came up with the 8th Street Stormwater and Sewer Separation Project. Not only did it address all the flooding, but it took all that water, it'll take all that water and it'll go to the lift station and it'll go to the plant and it'll be treated, which that required less going into the interceptor, which lowered the cost of that interceptor project. As you all know, we had a huge price tag. It reduced that cost and plus it got us the attention of the EPA. And they came to the table and it's been a long process, a lot of executive sessions. I could have threw up my hands many times and poor Lynn probably pulled out half of his hair during the process. But with the action tonight, you know what? We did it. There's not going to be, hopefully, a sewer rate increase, so I can say, "Guys, I did it. We did it." It's a huge accomplishment and I'm glad that I can leave things better than I found it. Sometimes sitting in this seat is not easy and I never made anything personal, but it's like Vicky said earlier, when my name's on something, I want to make sure it's right because all we have is my integrity and people can just be in the eye and I can look them in the eye and they know when I give them my word or I'm saying I'm going to help. I'm going to make sure I do it and it's done right. I appreciate working with everybody. Vicky, like I said, I was with you when you carried that box in there. And to say you created that office is, I mean, it was not an easy task. And I turned to you for a lot, especially when we got our first 1782. I looked at you and I'm like, "Show me how to read this." Now I'm like, "Oh, those 1782s probably do. Did it get it back yet? Getting off track. Look, look, squirrel." They probably got that back. But I appreciate that and your friendship and I will carry, carry the torch because one thing that, I met you back when you were councilperson at large and we were having those issues and you were the first one. And I remember Ron, both of you all said, "I'm going to help you." And you all been ever since. And Nathan, I can't thank you enough for all, I'll let you do it for your friendship. And I feel that, I look at Nancy and Richard or so many times, I look them for your prayers and for your support, especially when I walked out here, just, whew, sometimes in tears, sometimes angry, sometimes not. But always, when I left that, went out that door, I left it behind because I know I made my vote for what was best for this city and what was especially best for my district. A lot of times, it was not easy. I always tried to explain where I came from, why I supported something or why I did it. But I hope nobody ever took it in personal, but I had a voice and I was going to use it. And sometimes I may get a little bit too vocal, but I just had to stand up for what I thought was right. And working with all the department heads, Heather, you and I have worked hand in hand and I appreciate that and we're going to continue to work hand in hand. You've got full staff now. I mean, you barely had staff when we first really started, but now, I don't even know how many you have now, but you've got a full staff and you've got a good team together. And Nathan really worked hand in hand and really led the charge on the homeless. And through all of that, I got to meet with you, Barbara, and got to know you and call you friend and thank you for being that strong voice. That's not easy. And I do appreciate you, you and that. And you have educated me so much. So with that, I thank you all and I hope that as I go over here, take my new role on as city clerk, that even the public realizes this is not an easy seat to sit in. There's a lot of tough decisions, but like I said, just remember what my mom, my dad taught me, leave things better than you found it. So I wish you all the best and I look forward to working with you all as city clerk. And that is all I have. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Meeting adjourned.